Welcome to the February 6, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Clemens?
Here.
Dewater?
Here.
Morris?
Here.
Weir?
Here.
Here.
Number four is approval of the February 6, 2024 Agenda. However, that being said, it's going to be slightly amended. Our budget meeting was originally scheduled for 5:00. However, when we posted it, it said 6:00. So, we're combining our budget meeting into our regularly scheduled meeting. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five on our agenda is public discussion. Anyone that would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
John Carroll, Oldham Lake, 54th and Yee, Evansdale, Iowa. I've been on the board for the planning and zoning for nearly 20 years. Recently, I stopped in the mayor's office for an update as to change in an ordinance to allow a new Quickstar to be built on a piece of land that our current ordinance would not allow them. While I was there, I asked the mayor why Scott Strayer was no longer a member of the PMZ. I was told she reached out to the mayor, to him rather, and had no response. Not totally complete, she reached out to him with a letter telling him his term was terminated, or was up, rather, and no offer at all to have him reinstated to another term, which he is perfectly willing to have. In my 20, near 20 years of being on the board, I can say he is no other person serving more than qualified to be on the PMZ star than Scott Strayer. Not only the knowledge you brought, but you could depend on him being there at every meeting. That goes, and that does not go for a couple of other current members that we also have on the members, because the last two times, both of them never showed up. I won't mention names, you can figure them out. We need people on this board with those qualities. Whatever the rift the mayor has with the two of them, I have no idea, but the nitpicking bull crap needs to end, and we need to put people like them back on our committee. And we suggest that it is good for our community, not only just a bunch of us people having on a committee. We are only a committee that suggests the council will do whatever those please pled, what we decide for our suggestions. So, there's no reason to be upset or nitpicky about someone not serving. I'd hope that they reconsider and put both Scott Strayer back on, as well as Denny Wilson, because you could depend on him being there. You know, we have our differences, but yeah, I think we try to do what's best for the community. Is there a chance?
Thank you, John.
Yeah, and they're both willing to serve.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kelly Parker, Marion Street. Starting a timer here. So, you guys have been busy. Thank you for serving. Planning and zoning met last week, and I was dismayed to learn that Scott Strader, our former chair, was not reappointed for another term. Have to say, he was a great chair, so knowledgeable. We really missed him at the meeting when we were trying to consider the proposal you put before planning and zoning. I would like to ask the council to put him back on planning and zoning, because he's a real asset to our community, and I want to thank him for his years of service to planning and zoning and to Evansdale. Second, I read your resolution about what you want to do with the waterworks. You want to charge $29 per month extra for every citizen. That's going to bring your quarterly water bills up to about an extra $90. That's significant. A lot of citizens can't afford that. Third, the city wants to ask for $6.5 million for a loan. I don't think this is the right time to do this. We're already working on Lafayette. We're renovating our wastewater treatment plant. We can't afford those projects. I think it's irresponsible to seek out more loans. Also... I forgot what else I was going to say, but I thank you for listening to me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Oh, I remember. I prepared a chart for you as well. If our street workers start out at $24,000 a year, and this is not factoring in the raises, you want to give them 5%, 6% raises. This is just what you passed last week. By the time they're at retiring age, they're going to be about $86,000 a year, which is way more than the average citizen in Evansdale makes. It's kind of a slap in the face to our citizens to expect them to fund these really high salaries. And then you want to pass even more raises. I just don't think it's sustainable. That was my other point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denny Wilson, 1023 Central Avenue. I'm planning a zoning committee. I got a letter saying my term was up. I come back down to re-up again, and I was told my services are no longer needed. We needed new blood. No, I did not quit. I did try to re-up, and I was told no. When it was just 90% of the time, it was me, Scott, John, and Jeff when he was on there. Thank you.
We missed you on planning and zoning, Denny.
Scott Strader, 1515 West Gilbert. I was never reached out to to re-up mine. I was sent this letter that said I was done. I know Councilwoman Clements had similar thing. I was told that she had resigned for her recent loss, and I saw her a few weeks later at the Hickory House, and she said she got the same letter that Denny and I got. And you're also proposing to reduce planning and zoning from seven people down to five? I assume that's the assumption that nobody will serve on it? But when you keep firing people that are on it and willing to serve, it doesn't make any sense to reduce the board. You have people willing to do the job, but you won't let them. So, don't reduce the size of the board. Go ahead and let those people serve and do what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Steve Siebel, 413 Evans Road, Evansdale, Iowa. I just wanted to make a couple of comments of what I've observed in the last month. First, I want to congratulate all of you for taking on a job that's supposed to be fiscally responsible to the citizens, not yourself or somebody else on your committee. In response to questions regarding good faith raises of 8% for the public works, a couple statements from the council need to be clarified. First, Deanne claimed the reason for the 8% raise was the increased Consumer Price Index created by COVID, which she claims has inflated the costs on everything. In saying this, she neglected to realize that the Public Works Department was not the only people affected by this inflationary blast to the economy. Everyone living in this community is affected by the additional costs of everything, which I very well know. Ultimately, the 8% increase in pay, which they're very well deserving, will be an extra tax burden to the citizens, as well as that 8% CPI increase that all the citizens in this town have incurred. Which brings me to the second final statement that needs clarification. At the last meeting, Mr. Morris made a statement that our people are our assets. While this statement is correct, his accolades were directed to the wrong group of people. The citizens and the taxpayers in this community pay the bills for everything, and they are the greatest asset. This is not to take away from their invaluable service that they provide daily in the Public Works Department, but it should be mentioned that a government employee can never really be a total asset when 100% of their pay is derived from some sort of tax revenue. So, any taxes paid into the system by the government employees is a recycled revenue. Their service to the community is where their value lies, and they do a great job. Ultimately, this 8% raise will be reflected in a greater tax burden for the citizens, as well as everything else that's coming down the pipeline. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Thank you for letting the council and myself know what you feel that the city is doing and maybe not doing correctly. We appreciate it. Number six is approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven is boards and commissions, Planning and Zoning Commission, which is an approval by council.
I guess I would like to talk about that.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of all the moving around going on. I would imagine, you know, if I'm going to vote on something, I want to know more about it.
Yeah. That's totally fine. When their terms were expired, so, you know, we were looking for different people to place on that board, so, and there wasn't... I'm sorry, but you've had your time.
It's just a question that's on the subject. I wonder why you didn't bring me there at my desk? I think we have a right to know.
It wasn't about that. It was just their term has expired. So, and it was at a time, we're still looking, and I didn't tell John that I wouldn't consider them. And Ms. Kelly Parker, have you read the rules lately on our agenda?
Yes, we get three minutes to talk. To talk, actually.
Yeah.
And you gave me two and a half minutes last week. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, I guess...
I have my timer now, too.
My trouble, having been appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission last year and never going to a meeting with it all, always being cited that there was not enough people to get together for a meeting.
Right.
So, these people are willing to serve, and if they're getting the boot, so to speak, I don't understand it if we can't get people to serve.
Well, they really did not get the boot, just so you know.
I just don't know.
Just their term expired.
Yeah, I agree.
Simple as that.
My services are no longer needed.
Yeah, and actually, and actually, Denny, I have that email. If you're ever interested in me serving again, I'm out here to serve. And I, okay, thank you.
I've been on that board 20 years. I've never received a letter like that before. And I've been served under how many different mayors through the years? I've never received a letter like that. I'm the oldest one that's on that. Why didn't I get one?
Thank you for serving all those years.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, how many seats are currently vacant out of the seven?
Out of the seven? There is two.
Two? And this is appointing the one?
This is appointing the one.
Okay, so there would still be one left vacant?
No, if we reduce the size, which we are talking about in ordinance 699, just because we have had difficulty with everybody showing up. And I believe that you had that problem in the past, right?
Well, just a vote list and forward.
Yeah, so...
We always had enough, because me, Scott, and Jeff, I showed up, so it's Steve, Ken Billy, and Kelly.
We never meet. The last meeting was May 2022. The council doesn't require a lot of us, actually.
Yeah, and it has to be something that needs to go before you, so...
I make a motion to approve Jeff Dawson, planning and zoning.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number eight is approval of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
So, it's formally stated.
Clemens?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut. Yes.
Okay, number nine is a public hearing, and this is sale of city property. Public hearing is open. And then the...
And proof of publication is on file, and there are no public comments.
Now that it's open, we have Nick, and you pronounce it Haf, right? Hafes, okay. He is with us here tonight, representing QuickTrip, R/ QuickStar, depending on what state you're in, right? Would you like to get up to the podium?
Sure, for sure.
If anyone has any questions for Mr. Hafes, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer those.
Thanks, Deanne. Like she said, my name is Nick. We think the Eagles Landing development would be an awesome site for another QuickStar. We enjoy being in your community already, and hopefully can make it happen. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Sir, could you explain to them where possibly you are going to build this at? Because it isn't actually in the landing, it's next to it, which we want to change that over so we can get the QuickStar there. So, maybe they'd like to know just where you're going to build that.
Sure, correct. Part of it is not in the landing yet, but most of it is, we're hoping to acquire the neighboring property as well and join that with the development smooth off the, I believe it's Doris Drive, and that would come in there nice and straight then. So, we're hoping to do that at the same time and create just past the McDonald's, right? Those lots right there for our site. Yeah. Good question.
So, what's the timeline if approved?
If approved, I believe the city still has some work to do. We were hoping that that would be completed next summer, and then we could start next summer or next fall. So, hopefully open basically in the fall of '25, be late, you know, November, December, best case, otherwise, most likely spring of '26 by the time it's open.
Okay.
Would be a little bit larger site for us, so it's, you know, the longer timeline, too.
Sure.
Are you going to have a car wash there, too?
Yes, we will have a car wash there.
Does the property have to be rezoned?
I believe so.
Right now, it is, and that is what went to planning and zoning. What our city attorney had recommended is we just take the C3, which has an exception of the maximum square foot could be 3,000. So, we are in the process of, obviously, as John stated, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting. We're in the process of taking that language out of the C3, and then it'll be released in C2, because C2 refers back to C3. C1, you would still have to get council's approval to have a convenience store in C1 at this time.
So, why do we have to redo the law when we can just rezon the property or go to the Board of Adjustments and do it? Why do we have to change the zoning laws?
Because all commercial districts, yeah, all commercial districts are that limitation for convenience stores.
That's where the Board of Appeals would come in and override that for that parcel length, correct? We don't have to change the verbiage of the zone.
That's what the city attorney had recommended.
That's one person's recommendation.
Yeah.
Ain't that what the Board of Variances is for?
This is handled through our city attorney, so...
I don't believe that the zoning law should be changed for a parcel, because that opens up a whole basket of stuff for everything. This is one parcel that can be worked around and it should be approved.
There's a reason we wanted him back on planning and zoning.
Any other questions for Nick?
I do support your story. I'm just, it's not you, it's...
No, I understand where you're coming from. Appreciate the questions.
And this isn't, yeah, this isn't time to discuss the zoning of the QuickStar. It's, you know, we have our city attorney working on it. He is making recommendations to our city.
But I do welcome QuickStar. I appreciate you looking at it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, pretty exciting development.
I, yeah, I think so as well.
We're all excited.
Thank you.
And we really thank you for coming tonight.
Oh.
That's a long travel.
It is, but nice to be welcomed, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Nick. Any other comments in regards to the sale of city property? Okay. Public hearing will be closed. You all received a packet, the city attorney and QuickStar, QuickTrip, sorry, we're so used to call it QuickStar around here, had worked on the offer to purchase. In your packet you received, it's from QuickTrip from the city of Evansdale, and then the other one is offered to purchase, city of Evansdale offered to purchase with QuickTrip, and that is the land that is just north, what it is, northwest of Eagles Landing currently. And this is Resolution 6792, is approving the sale of city property. We spent quite a bit of time going back and forth with QuickTrip's attorney today and the city's attorney. We have come to agreement in every area from the offer to purchase. We had one negotiating item, and that was on the QuickTrip from the city of Evansdale. And if you look at the last page of that packet, this is an option to purchase. So, basically, just for transparency stakes, it's just basically stating that if, for some reason, it would completely fall apart, say, you know, QuickTrip has spent all these millions or whatever, and this is why this comes about in business, they've spent all these millions putting this together, working with, you know, our city engineers, working with their engineers, working with city attorneys, et cetera. This is a what-if statement. If, say, another convenience store, large convenience store, or gas trucking center, whatever, wanted to, wanted that land more than QuickTrip, they could come to us and say, hey, we're going to offer you 5 million for that land. So, this is, this last option to purchase that they finally agreed on is basically just stating, in the event that it would just fall through, which we don't have any intention of that, we're really excited about this development, and we are moving forward. Matter of fact, we have a agenda, a resolution tonight to approve a 6.5 million bond for that project and our Lafayette Road project. So, we're moving forward as quickly as we can as well, because we do have a deadline of December 31st this year for the infrastructure that the city has agreed to put in. Yes. So, and basically, we'd agree to, for a period of five years, following the exercise, or for a period of 20 years, following the date of exercise, for QuickTrip to, you know, start, they're going to look for a different place if it would fall through. That is probably the only thing that they were going back and forth on, and that's just a legal ease to cover, you know, if the city would decide to back out at the last minute. So, and like our, like QuickTrip and ourselves, you know, we've put a lot into this as well. A lot of time and effort and, you know, attorney fees and getting ready to put the, you know, the construction, Phase 2 of Eagles Landing, so... What we're approving tonight is the purchase of the property. We are the sale of city property. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
The zoning piece of this comes into a separate item, correct?
It definitely does. Yes.
And so, the land that we get out of the deal that's been approved and everything?
Yes, that's, yeah.
That area to the north there?
Yeah.
If nothing further, I'll make the motion to approve the sale of city property.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut. Yes.
Thank you, Nick.
Appreciate it.
Number 11 is Resolution, I'm sorry, yeah, number 11, 6793. It's set in date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment for the East Heights urban renewal area.
I'd move passage to Resolution 6793.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut. Yes.
Number 12 is Resolution 6794, setting date for public hearing on an expanded Home Acres urban renewal area and an urban renewal plan amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut.
So, just so everybody knows, and I know the council is familiar with these terms, but in the process of doing the project to Lafayette Road, the full reconstruction and doing the infrastructure for Eagles Landing, that's what these plan amendments are. East Heights is the Eagles Landing area, and Home Acres is the Lafayette Road area. That's going to be a split project. Road use and Home Acres will be 50-50% in partnership on the Lafayette Road project. In the next item on the resolution, Resolution 6795, setting date for public hearing, an additional action on proposal to enter a general obligation loan agreement to borrow money in the amount of 6.5 million, is for the Eagles Landing infrastructure project. We also have around $327,000 left from the Phase 1 project that will go towards that. And then for Lafayette Road, the road use currently and will be into the next year, part of their funds are being utilized for the engineering fees to keep our costs low, except for bonding, for all that, for all those funds. And we also have a 1.7, 1.7 hundred thousand, $7,000 bond, or I should say, I'm sorry, DOT grant for that project as well. It's 1,707,000.
How much will the land sale of QuickStar cover on these upgrades?
The lots for Eagles Landing are based on assessed valuation. The lots in Eagles Landing sell for $1. They do also have to pay for our realtor fee, but in this particular instance, this is a trade, so... Just one moment, please. This is a trade, so we are getting a piece of land in exchange. So, there will be, the only thing that will exchange hand is $1.
You said we're going to use road use tax to cover engineering fees for Lafayette. How much of that, how much money will we get for that?
How much will road use?
Yeah, to cover for Lafayette engineering fees?
Out of road use, it's going to be in between two fiscal years, it's going to be $800,000.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Didn't we have the engineering barely completed on Lafayette? We're going to pay another 800,000?
That's going into it. I'm saying between, you know, we have so much already spent this year, and then that's going into next year, that the next year is going to cover construction costs. Yeah. I will take a motion for Resolution 6795.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut. Yes.
Resolution 6796 is approving collective bargaining contract between city and chauffeurs, Teamsters. Resolution 6796 is approving collective bargaining contract between city and chauffeurs Teamsters and helpers local 238. And that is for the police department. Council, any questions on that?
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Clemens?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
And Smut? Yes.
Resolution 6797 is approving collective bargaining contract between city and IBEW local 288. Any questions on that, council?
I make a motion, we accept that resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Clemens?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir? Yes.
Yes.
Number 16 is request from police department to purchase new scheduling software in the amount of 1,150 from TCP Software. I, Sergeant Newman had come to me, and he does most of the scheduling, stated that they've been using some software, actually, that it was kinda a hammy now, and I think, back from 2012. And it's just, it, it just doesn't work, it's just not keeping up with, you know, with their, with their scheduling needs. And this is just a basic, and we, you know, also has the option later down the road that we could add pieces to it. So it would be a piece that, you know, we could use for years to come.
Does it require, like, monthly fees, yearly fees, subscription?
Sergeant Newman, could you speak to that, please?
So what that is, is, uh... If you pay it in a year, it's $5 per employee that you have on the scheduling software. So it's 950, that's per month. So it's 950 per year for the license for that software. The reason it's 1150 now is because there's a $250 setup fee where they assign a person to train us on how to use it, and so forth. It is 950 a year.
950?
950 dollars a year to do the software.
And then that keeps track of everybody's hours and...
Yeah, it's actually, it's, it's a, um... I believe Iowa State Patrol uses the same software. It, it seems very robust and very...
Does it work with, like, their payroll system?
It, I don't know about the payroll system, but there is an option on there where you can just, instead of filling out, hand-filling out like a timesheet, you can actually just basically hit send, and it'll automatically send it to City Hall, everybody's timesheet. But the information on there is only as good as the person keeping up with the input, right? So, I mean, it would take, it's gonna be a learning process if we do go through this, but, well, I think it'll benefit us greatly to... And the other big thing is web-based. So there's apps on phones that you can play, where anybody that has an app can log in, see when they work, or see when they have training, or, or stuff like that. They don't actually have to call or go to the police department to get that information, so.
That would be handy.
Yep.
Still using the scheduler pro, or whatever the...
Yeah, the VSS.
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, it's long overdue.
Yeah, there's not too many departments that use that anymore. It was a big thing back...
The software's officially not even supported, so the fact that it's still running is...
And, and they do have continuing updates?
Yeah, I assume so. It's, it's all web-based. They take care of all that stuff.
Included with the subscription.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He'd never said anything to me about any of that, so. And that's stuff I can ask if you want me to, but...
Well, I, I mean, it's good to know that. Just to know that there's not gonna be a, you can have it, but it'll cost you.
He, he said this was what it was, is 950 a year, $5 employee for...
I've got some, so.
We pay it some, and they keep updating it.
Yep.
And he let Officer Newman use it out. Tried out, logged in, gave him a, you know, a test, a test period, that he can go in and see if it was gonna work for their needs as well.
Yeah, I was able to use it for a week. Unfortunately, that was a week of our blizzards, so I spent more time outside the office that week than I did in the office, but... The little bit I did use it, it did look like it was gonna be pretty handy for us, and it worked out pretty good, so.
All right.
One-year commitment?
Yeah, I figured if we just do a year, see how it goes.
Yep.
And then we'll revisit it next year, and see if it's something we wanna continue doing, so. Anything else?
Thank you, I appreciate it, Officer Newman, Sergeant Newman, sorry about that. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is to appoint Attorney Josh Moon as police department attorney. Attorney Josh Moon, he handles all their, like, citations, traffic violations, et cetera. He would be there to defend them if indeed they pled not guilty. I've reached out to the police department, and they said they were completely satisfied with what he had been doing for them in the past.
That's the only thing he'll do for the city?
That is correct.
Question. Could our current city attorney maybe take on that burden and give us some savings for giving her most of the work?
Actually, our attorney service is out of Cedar Rapids, so it wouldn't be cost-efficient, because they would have to travel to court at Black Hawk County. That's why we chose somebody local, and the city itself had been working with Josh Moon too at one point.
I remember that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I move approval of the appointment of Attorney Joshua Moon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 18 is request from Public Works Director to purchase 19 LED streetlights for Lafayette Road from Van Meter in the amount of 81.64 and 98 cents. There is also to-be-determined shipping, so we will have to approve it, plus shipping. We had started this Lafayette Road project quite some time ago. Our team, our public works team, has been doing all the work themselves, so you will see them come up probably within the next month or two, depending on the weather. But right now, we currently only have the old 400 watt, what was it again? Vapor lights. So they do wanna replace those lights as a part of completing this project.
These'll go on the new poles that they've installed?
Yes, yep.
Has anyone ever considered taking donations and see if the public and the city themselves put some money to that, save the city some money, it might come in, might be surprised what you can collect?
Are you volunteering, John? Okay, I'll be calling you tomorrow. Yeah.
So be able to see your fancy car better under the lights?
Do you have a preference on time I reach out to you? Thank you, I appreciate that. We are actually, this is completely off the subject and not on the agenda, that we really need to replace our Christmas lights. They're just so bad, we couldn't even put them up this year. Also, our banners throughout the city that are on the, on the light poles. So, you know, if anybody wants to give to those projects, I would definitely appreciate that, too. And that's not on the agenda or the budget, so.
Yeah, that'd be a great community project.
Yeah, that Christmas tree turned out beautiful.
It did.
Yeah, it was really.
Street Department did a good job.
Yep. So I'll take a, a motion to approve with shipping, 81.64, 98, plus shipping, I should say.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Request from Public Works Director to replace snowplow blade on the 2003 Freightliner in the amount of 12,866 with Don's Truck Sales. That is a Henderson blade. Don Truck Sales is the only one in, is within our area, and maybe even the state of Iowa, that carries Henderson. But it's just the blade, so we still have the Henderson hydraulics and what the blade hooks onto. What Chris had explained, you know, they have to, the plow itself, they have to replace the blades, which is the sharper thing that actually cuts down to the snow and the ice. And it's so bent up, and it's been, what, repaired, and, well, you can imagine, it's a 2003, so it's over 21 years old.
So that's the original blade for it?
It is the original blade for it, yes. It's very difficult, and it's even, even in the functionality is far as plowing the streets, they have a difficult time with it because of the, because it's, it's bent in actually two places, isn't it, Chris? Yeah. We did have extra funds in the Public Works Department this year because we were able to save on sand and salt that we bought from the city of Waterloo back last, I think it was back last fall, when we actually approved that. So we do have the funds in this year's budget to purchase that new plow.
I would make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Request from Public Works Director to replace leaf springs on the 2,000 Sterling Dump Truck in the amount of 3,008 with K&amp;M Services. This was verbally approved previously. Any questions from council?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 21, Ordnance 698 approving wastewater increase over a five-year period, first reading. Sandy had went through it and just, she had requested or thought it would be a good idea if we make just some small changes. First and foremost, I wanna cover, I wanna cover the cost to our residents. I heard some numbers upwards of, I don't know, hundreds of dollars extra for our citizens, and that is not the case. The reason, you know, we had started back in 2019 increasing our wastewater fees, so we didn't have 50 to 100 dollars a month all of a sudden on our, on our citizens. And the case is, our regular fee per month is 20 dollars and 50 cents. We have set up separate funds just for the wastewater treatment plant project. And that money that comes in, that revenue that comes in, goes directly into that fund. It doesn't go to pay for a roll toll paper down at the wastewater treatment, one moment. It doesn't go to pay for a roll toll paper down at the wastewater department. It's, you know, segregated out, that's what it's going for, and it's going to pay the debt back. We will start paying that debt in fiscal year '25. But the total that is, is what it's gonna increase from where we already were. We were already at 12 dollars and 50 cents a month that we started in 2019. It's gonna be 16 dollars and 10 cents per month in addition. So the total fee for the wastewater, it's gonna spell out 28.60 wastewater treatment plant fee and the original 20.50 that we've been charging since Tag was a pub, will stay the same. Ms. Parker?
I just got my bill, and I'm not seeing the 21, I see 37.50 as the wastewater treatment plant fee. Where's the 21 dollars to do it for the 20.50 fee?
The 20.50 is gonna be your normal sewer fee, right here. And that's, this is quarter. This is a quarter, this is a month.
So, that is an increase from the 50.
So, 20.50 a month right now comes to 61.50.
Right.
12 dollars and 50 cents. 12 dollars and 50 cents per month comes to 37.50. That's a quarterly bill. This is monthly.
Right, and this resolution is wrong then? You said you're lowering it to 16?
No. Right now, we're at 12.50 per month. We're increasing it by 16 dollars and 10 cents. So 12 dollars and 50 cents plus 16 dollars and 10 cents brings it to 28.60.
Monthly?
Monthly.
Okay, I didn't hear that number coming from you then, so.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying, it's 28 dollars a month, extra fee, new fee.
16 dollars and 10 cents.
Reading the resolution, that's not clear to this...
Extra. It's an ordinance. Write down 12 dollars and 50 cents on your piece of paper. And then write down 16 dollars and 10 cents and add it together, please. That comes out to 28 dollars and 60 cents, does it not?
Respectfully, the 12.50 and 16.10 are not numbers that I had available to me at my house to do that.
You can look on, go online right now and look at our current code of ordinances.
Can you please quote that quote for me?
99.03, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the monthly increase on your bill, you're gonna see it triple. It's gonna be three times the...
It'll be 16 dollars and 10 cents extra every month, yes, times three.
So we'll take that times three, and that's what your bill will be.
That is correct. Yep.
If we don't get billed by the month, we get billed by the quarter.
That is correct. That's how this ordinance...
If all the other rates stayed the same, a minimum quarterly bill would go from 194 dollars and extra 48.30.
What did you say?
194 plus 48.30.
Over 16.10.
Is what the total of all utilities would be.
The total is actually gonna be 49.10 extra, a quarter.
And let's remember the 20 dollar increase for this year.
Our 49.10 a month.
My last bill was 174 dollars, so now it's 194 dollars, and it's going to even more. I think that's a burden for our citizens.
The, the minimum bill's been 194 for some time.
My last bill, I have it on my budget app, was 174 dollars.
Did you have a credit from the previous bill?
I always pay exactly what's on my stub.
Because if you have water, sewer, and garbage, a minimum is 194.
Respectfully, that's not what was on my invoice.
Is that your stub?
Mm-hmm.
She can, I'm sure they would happily assist her in the office tomorrow, Sandy.
Your minimum's 194.
Right, but my last bill was 174. It increased because this is my first bill of this year, so.
Yes, in July 1st, rates go up.
So, to the public, we've had public hearings, we've, the council has approved a long time ago. It took us five years to approve a plan to do the wastewater treatment plant facility. You know, I'm sure if we would've started it back in 2019, it wouldn't have cost us 9.8 million dollars. But that's what we have to pay off, and we will have to increase our monthly sewer bill in order to pay back the 9.8 million dollars. So some of the things that Counselor Clemens had recommended is, on A through D through 99.3, is to add in wastewater treatment plant fee. I thought that was a good, I thought that was a good recommendation. There was language in Section 2 of 9903 at the end that says, "and which are located in a commercial zone." Because she pointed out that some people that are billed commercially for their wastewater fee are in residential. I know when K&amp;M Sausage was with us still, they were in a residential area and billed as commercial. So she asked that we strike out that language. Also, in Section 3, there's probably about six sentences down where it says, "but in, in any event, not less than a minimum charge." And then there was a repeat in that, so we're gonna delete that second repeat of that. And then just one, two, three, five sentences up, "but if no such meter is installed," I don't know where this language came from. That was on the original ordinance back when we amended it in 2019. But she would ask that we strike that, because we don't have a city public works committee to review our pricing. Maybe we should. Also, within a commercial zone, she'd asked in two other places to be, to be stricken from that language. to be str- to be stricken from that language. Any questions?
So how do we accomplish those changes?
We'll just amend it on our end, and then it'll come to you guys again for the second reading.
Okay.
So it would be, actually, the motion would be to approve Ordinance Number 698 on its first reading as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Clemens?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
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 Number 22 is Ordinance 699, reducing the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission Board from seven members to five members in its first reading. Um, as stated by Dick Dewar, I think, back in, when we reduced the size of the library board, all of the, our boards and commissions have five members. We have five members for council. You know, this is the only board left that has seven members. It's hard in these days to get people to volunteer, um, at any level, um, so I think it'd be in the best interest of the city if we did reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Board.
With the appointment of Jeff tonight, does that put us at four or six?
That would put us at four. However, that being said, we have two that do not come.
That are currently.
Yeah, so that is something as a whole, we're going to have to look at.
What's a, what's a typical number for planning zoning in the area?
No idea.
Okay.
Well, I should say this. A lot of cities within our area, such as Waterloo, Cedar Falls, they have a planning and zoning department.
Okay.
So like your smaller communities, I'd be happy to find out if you'd like me to.
Who's current chair, Mayor?
We don't have a current chair. They were going to temporarily appoint one at the meeting. They didn't even have a quorum because it was only three of them that showed up. They would have had a quorum if it was a five-member board.
Mayor, can a councilperson be on another elected board, like Mr. Morris, if he's on P and Z and councilman?
He's not on P and Z.
Yeah, I was told that it was, uh, nullified effective.
No, no, Adam is no longer. He was on Planning and Zoning before he was elected.
I'd love to be able to serve both, but I don't have enough time, for one.
Go ahead, Adam. No, no, you go ahead.
I guess for myself, uh, you know, my 20% of my voice here tonight, with the additional information that comes up from the members, um, there's some pretty strong passion around it. Um, I, I would like to speak with them as well. I am familiar with Scott. I, I, I will state that he seemed to be quite the asset from the, the interactions I have had with him. Uh, so I guess I would like to better understand, especially absent of a chair, what the current P and Z wants, you know, because it is them that run it, and if it's a, the ability that they are ineffective because they don't have a quorum, then that to me is a reasonable reason, excuse, whatever, to bring this forward. Having it, we're absent a chair, um, obviously, there's been a lot of personnel changes and things within it.
Mm.
I guess I would like some more information from the committee especially.
I would agree.
Um, that I am not prepared to take action on this tonight personally for my one vote.
I'd be in favor of tabling it until our next council meeting.
I'll take a motion to do so.
So, so go.
Second.
Uh, let's do a roll call on that. To table, uh, Ordinance 699 until more information is gathered regarding, um, members, past members, what kind of members we're going to have going forward.
Clemens?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
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 Okay. So at this time, we will dive into our budget.
Do we need to close this meeting at all, Mayor, move into the next official?
No. So I can do one of those already? So since we had last, um, discussed the budget, there's just been, um, a few just minor changes. One of them was something that we'd talked about for quite a few years, and that is a side-by-side, um, for the fire department. Um, we are hoping to, uh, get a grant for that and maybe also some funding from another local source. Um, but, and I know that Justin can speak to this himself, that we had an incident, um, that happened this summer where, um, a fully equipped side-by-side, um, actually, was it Gilbertville and, and who is the two cities that ended up responding?
Gilbertville brought theirs, and I think the rest of them were personal use.
Okay, and the rest of them were personal use. Um, they have them equipped today, the side-by-sides, where they have, um, they have a apparatus, apparatus holding water, they have a hose, they have, you know, rescue equipment on there you can get, um, I, I think, just, they have a stretcher that you, that connects somehow to the apparatus. Um, it'd be a lot, you know, ours is, right now, um, really outdated, it doesn't have any of these features, features on in itself. What, what can we use ours for, the one we currently have?
Uh, so the one we were, we, that's currently in service is a John Deere Gator, and it's the old six-wheel. Its top speed might be 20 miles an hour, um, so getting somewhere un-trailored longer distances is tough. So to assist another agency, even to run up and down our trail system, um, now, the price was 100% right on it. It was donated, I believe, by U.S. Smokeless Tobacco many, many years ago, so absolutely, it was a fantastic addition. Uh, since then, it has dual-purposed in any type of medical calls, it is set up with the ability to put, uh, it's designed specifically for like the trail system, someone who just can't walk, someone who has fallen or just needs the ability to be assisted out, even if it's just, I twisted my ankle, they can sit in a chairs or it has the ability for a complete backboard. So if someone who does truly need, uh, medical services were able to treat them with almost the capability of a, you know, a small ambulance. The new ones are dual-purpose, that they can have that same med-bed type criteria, and then also a small pump and hose on it for like wildland firefighting. Um, one of the incidents, to remind them, we were down alongside the river, as dry as it was last year, somebody decided to start a small fire, um, it was reported in, and it was reported in multiple times, and it took resources beyond resources that we'd have a heck of a down payment on a UTV, uh, had, had we put up money elsewhere, just to get back into the woods, um, with, you know, trucks wouldn't make it, uh, the inloader ended up having to come down and basically clear a path, um, for us to be able to get down in there. So, uh, other agencies provided their UTV, we have seen the apparatus, so we've seen it, been able to demo it, get our hands on it. Um, Independence, I believe, also has gotten one in the past year or so, uh, very much an upgrade. So it would be looked on the department to dual-purpose for both wildland firefighting and then also, uh, emergency medical services in our trails and off-road systems.
I think that, I mean, on top of the, the grants and stuff that you're looking to get for that, I think reaching out for donations for the community might not be a bad idea, too.
We, we've even discussed within the department, you know, what's our chili suppers for, you know, things like that. It's great to be able to allocate those funds to different things that, um, while the association are the ones where that money goes, their stance, uh, has been that definitely being city vehicles, city, you know, benefit for it, does need to solely rely within the city, which is why the money's being put up here in the budget, but that's not to say that if there's anything extra or anything beyond just a base model, the association that says, hey, we want this, it would really come in handy. Um, they've always addressed that, to be able to come into, okay, we, we want to buy an upgrade, or we want to do something beyond the base. Uh, that would be something that would be put in front of the membership as well, we've talked about it, uh, along with any type of grants, you know, we're hoping, depending, has to be timed correctly, but the aisle is big into parks and rec-style things, to where they've pretty much told us, you know, they're, they can't come out and buy us an ambulance again, but this is kind of a different way of still getting equipment we may need, uh, and still gets on their quality of life, they're real big into the, the parks and recreation and lifestyle type of, uh, projects, so that has been discussed as well. Again, nothing has been signed, we don't have anything lined up yet, but we're certainly going to supplement, uh, as best we can.
Thank you, Justin.
And Scott?
Oh.
I think that would be a great act. Accessory for us because our firefighters are all volunteer, and they donate their time, and the less wear and tear or personal injury they endure, the better off they'll be, because if we don't have something like that, going to the woods, going down to the river, all our volunteer firefighters are carrying everything by hand to and fro, risking injury, loss of work, and everything else. I think that would be great, not only to keep them safe, but as morale booster to our fire department.
Yes, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah.
One of the other things we are going to discuss tonight that was actually on our original agenda was council to consider ongoing agreement with Algren Heights for the animal control. Um, it had been a while since we had approached them, um, with any kind of an increase. We were at 2,284. Um, Chris, uh, worked with, uh, Mayor Smack, and it, we were going to look for a 4% increase, so we go from 2,284 to 2,353, because, you know, just like everything else, you know, costs are going up, so we need to help offset those costs. The other thing is, this was brought up, um, a couple of years ago, I can't tell you exactly what year, maybe 2020, but, um, it's council to consider a service provider agreement with our VAC all. We had an incident that happened, um, I don't know, it was probably about six weeks ago or so, in the city of Raymond, and, you know, when you have something like this, and the, the closest, the closest, um, company that provides that service, the VAC all does, is in Des Moines. So, and if they're already, if they're already on something else, first of all, we got to wait that two hours for them to come up, and, and, and then if they're already on something else, it may be, it may be a day. So you have a backup of sewer that, you know, this is going on citywide, or, you know, for a town like Raymond, or a town like Gilbertville, or a town like Dunkerton, or Jessup, or Algren Heights, you know, time is of essence, basically, time is of essence. So I don't know if you looked through that agreement that was in your, um, that was originally tack to, uh, attached to the budget, um, but we were able to help Raymond out, um, this last time, and, you know, they, Chris, how many hours were we there? Was it like four? It was four hours, and it was $1,000 for us. We did have to pay that employee overtime because it wasn't a Saturday, however, um, you know, it's, it, it just helped, kind of helped offset some of our costs, so.
Mayor, just on that topic, I do remember discussing, and I'm trying to jog my memory, I think it was really more down to the wear and tear on the unit, the liability, the, it was kind of just more into the, while, you know, helping other places, other cities and stuff was great, potentially also a small revenue source, but things of a specialized piece of equipment that would help some cost as well. I think there was just some general concern over if something breaks, or if our employee gets hurt while on that job, who is liable? Because that's our work comp claim, because they're on our dime, but technically, they were out servicing another, you know, city entity, something. Did we kind of get anywhere with that, working out some of those details?
I don't, no. I, I don't recall that conversation, this was a long time ago, we had the initial conversation, um, but I'd be happy to check into that.
Because I would, I mean, I would certainly entertain it again, but just $250 an hour sounds great, up until you, you know, someone gets hurt, or we break that piece of equipment, and then we get a $20,000 bill back, or we get one of our people out for a while, I just, I just want to make sure that we understand the full risk, uh, of what potentially could, because it is a highly specialized piece of equipment that is very expensive, so. That's just my feelings on it.
Anyone else? And of course, this isn't budget or anything, this is just something that want, um, uh, was discussed and to be brought back to council, um, because we could help out those other smaller cities and communities around us, um, as part of that process.
I know our city motto is "City of Good Neighbors," that certainly would come under the heading of that.
Yeah, this, this is for sure.
You know, if my sewer's backed up, I would prefer to ask the town next door to help me as opposed to waiting for somebody from Des Moines to show up the next day.
Right.
When I've got a basement full of whatever.
Yeah, and we've been in that situation ourselves before, um, we had the VAC all that it was, quite a bit of time had lapsed before, um, that service was available, so, you know, we as a city completely understand what it could be like, um, but I would definitely check into those things.
And how often are the cities around us calling us, saying, hey, I need to use your vacuum?
That's a good question. Chris, do you have any, do you have a temperature on that at all?
Um, Dunkerton had one last year, I think Jessup had one, Gilbert had, I think, I don't think Gilbert had any, um, I'm not sure on Algren, but it's minimal, very minimal.
We're not going to get rich doing it, but.
Well, no.
No.
And it just makes me wonder if there's a point to an agreement. It's kind of one of the things, if we got the people and we got the time, okay, but it's going to cost you, um, you know, who can't wait two hours? I mean, do we get there before two hours is up? I mean, do they just drop everything right now? Um, so, you know, just things.
No, that's, that's a thought.
Not opposed to helping them.
Yeah, but if you didn't have an agreement in place, you know, and it's, you know, it's someone in that city or someone in our city or whatever, and, you know, are we just using that on our own free time? And, you know, it could cause concern.
I think the other piece was the, if we go in and they're jetting pipes and trying to open things up, and I am not the technical person on that.
Yeah.
But if we break something, so all the equipment, everything's fine, but we damaged something further, we do something incorrectly and flood the person's house, who's liable? You know, so again, just making sure we kind of cross off those pieces of, who are we there on behalf of, is it the city of Evansdale we're representing, or are we there on behalf of, you know, the city entity that they're, you know, contracted with us, those, so, because yes, I'm all for helping.
That's a good question.
It was just.
Yeah, that's.
I just want to understand all the risks from all the angles.
Yeah.
Before we wind up in a crappy situation.
No pun intended, of course.
I'm done, I'm sorry.
No, an agreement would, would be good for both parties.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree. But you might, uh, want to write it in such a way that you share the liability. Security system in place, I did have an opportunity to talk to, uh, Justin today about the security system, um, more so with the Community Response Center and those updates, um, they've had a security system in place for 20 years, so it, uh, I think Justin explained that at our last meeting, you know, there's no updating or whatever that can even possibly happen with that system there. Um, he was still reviewing some of those quotes and, um, you know, believed that this, the 18,000, of course, split in between the departments was realistic, and probably he could get it down lower.
I'm hoping, again, just the price of what we put in and how fancy you want something, you want, you know, a camera that can zoom and auto-read license plates and all those types of features versus one that's just fixed and just doesn't move, so, um, there are certain things that are needed out of the system because the camera system does ward off into the police department's interview rooms. I'm not overly familiar with it, but I do know that was something specialized that the system does need to be capable of, so that's something we'll have to be mindful if anything gets replaced, um, but otherwise, the basic parking lot hallway cameras are pretty straightforward.
Any questions thus far?
And we were doing, uh, a camera system in City Hall, too.
We were, we were, you know, we were talking about that, one thing, and, you know, we'll probably formally put it on an agenda here soon, one thing that was, uh, just recommended for City Hall instead of, you know, spending the expense, uh, for the security of that, the doorway. And the issue is with that doorway, as we have discussed, is just nobody can see them coming in. So they're already in the hallway before we even know they're there. We do have a, a doorbell on it now, so at least we know someone has entered. Yeah, when it works. It could be intermittent days. But Justin was suggesting, and again, we'll probably just put that on the, one of these agendas coming up, is just to lock that door. And we, you know, employees have key access, of course, except when there's going to be a public meeting.
Yeah, and just to recap on that, I've talked with the mayor a couple of times, even just while we're looking. If, if it's ever back to the employee's security or safety to where they feel they need something here, hands down, no question, we need to look at doing something. Obviously, Misty being newer here to kind of bring her up to speed and her buyer talk. I, I'm in for either direction for a camera system or access control system for this building. We can start with something small. If it's primarily, you know, as I've talked with the mayor, primarily just they're worried about this back door, we might be able to just save ten grand and make fifty dollars worth of keys. So I just wanted to put that out there, that the CRC is a secure facility for a reason. Okay, camera should be there and probably working. City Hall, if we're just worried about more of who's in and out, I'm definitely not against for buttoning it up and making it like Fort Knox. It is a public building during business hours. It absolutely should be accessible by the public. We do have a main entrance. We also have a library entrance that then can connect through. So whether they want to park in back or outside, we can make sure we take care with the handicap doors and so on, kind of thinking all the scenarios. If it's primarily just, we're worried about this back door, an option is just to lock it.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense, though, to have recordings of who comes and goes. You know, you can get a pretty reasonable camera system. We, we put one at the depot for less than a thousand bucks, six cameras.
Yeah, hardest part here would just be really the, the cabling. Inside's not bad, because this is all drop ceiling, so we could get access to it. Getting to the exterior, if we wanted a parking lot camera, which, to be honest, I would almost argue that would probably be the first one I would want, watching the parking lot and then people walking in, as opposed to who's walking through the hallways. Just that way, there's no questions. Somebody trips and falls, somebody's car get broken into, there's some sort of confrontation, whatever, it's all there. Getting it through just how the concrete material of the building just needs to be done right so that we don't damage the building and then cause a leak or a bigger problem or something from the elements. But yes, I think we had budgeted, you know, eighteen thousand. City Hall would be nowhere near that. You know, I, I would think ten, to be honest, is probably pretty expensive.
The other thing we discussed at our last meeting was a sump pit, a sump pit project. I'm in, you know, I have every intention of leaving that in there. I think we need to stop kicking it down the road. We just need to get some contractors in there to look at it, to review it, get some ideas what we need to go forward. Dick had prepared a, you know, a kind of a model of what he thought would be the best source to, you know, to approve the, best source to cure the, the problem, what it is. It's, it's, there's water in the basement. We've had water in the basement. Every time we, seems like every time you take water out of the basement, you know, we have a hard rain. Now, last year with the drought, there wasn't a problem. So it's directly related to the rain. But that is something that we're considering for this budget period. Also, the tile replacement, more so the police department than, than down here. They have some tile that is just, needs to be replaced. It's a hazard. And it, it appeared to be a lot more inexpensive to just remove the tile, strip it, and polish the concrete floor. And they were, they were in favor of that at the police department. That was going to be to the tune of about four thousand. So, you know...
Is that just in the basement?
No, that is actually upstairs. That is in some of the hallways and in the restrooms.
Unfortunately, the basement needs a lot more work than that.
Yeah, no, the basement's going to be more like thirty-five thousand.
So what caused the mud and tile upstairs?
It's just, it's just use.
Wear and tear.
Yeah.
Cost of footsteps and things over it. I think it's, we've already replaced it once, I know.
On the fireside, I think we did.
Fireside, okay.
Yeah.
So yeah, then the PDs may be even older.
Well, and if you take it back to, you know, which we found out in like 2012 or what have you, because we had replaced some tile back in then, in that day. But it, the tile that was originally placed in there was not installed properly to begin with. And that was a bit of contention for a while, but how do you go back on someone, you know, once it starts, you know, once it starts degrading to the point that it needs to be replaced?
You know, I just wanted to say on that sump pit, I think Chris and I could handle this. We could be the generals.
Oh, for...
Just hire an electrician, Iowa wall saw to cut the hole, have the pit fabricated, probably save a lot of money. If there's no objection from...
I don't have any objections to that.
Anyone here?
I wouldn't object to at least finding out what, what it's going to run to, to get it where it needs to be.
Well, I mentioned, he's kind of open to it.
Is he? Okay. I know his plate has been pretty full lately, so...
Well, I'm, I'm willing to do, you know, some of the work.
Okay.
And then that way, we can kind of adjust and fine tune it as we go along.
Yeah. Okay. Scott Strater, he's a plumber. He volunteered his services.
You'll help? Great.
Have you ever been involved in looking at it before? Community Response Center, yeah. No, okay. Excellent.
We'll get together, take a good look at it.
You can show them this plan and what your thoughts are, and that'd be great. If we, any money that we could save, that's what we're doing. So... Yeah, I think so, too.
Something's done.
Yep. So another item for the police department was a stalker radar unit. This, ours, they, they actually expire, just like their uniforms do. This was something will be for budgeted for FY25. Right now, we had to send one unit in because it wasn't working properly. I think it was only like a couple hundred dollars to repair that. Is that correct? But the one we'd be replacing is, is outdated and expired and needs to be replaced. And that, like I said, is for the police department. Into the fire department, we are going to increase the fire chief's wages. They haven't been increased since 2015. It is a, he does a lot for our volunteer fire department and for our EMT and for ambulance. He, you know, has been working at this. It puts more time in than a lot of people. Let's just put it that way. Because we see his time, we see the time sheet. Anyway, from ten thousand to twelve thousand five hundred. The heat, they're going to need a heat replacement. These both are budgeted in place as well. We have a series of heat pumps for the heating control system. They get replaced every year. I think we have just two more to replace. Hopefully, we don't have to start replacing them all over again once we're done. Maybe we'll get a break for a couple of years.
How many pumps are there?
There's six total. So we've been replacing one at a time, I think since like 2018 was our first one.
Well, that'd be nice, we're done.
Yeah. Then we talked about the extractor, the turnout gear washer prolongs the, the life of the turnout gear. Also takes some of that smoke and whatever that they've been involved in when they do do go out on a fire, whatever, takes it actually out of the uniform so it doesn't cause the wear and tear. Moving forward, we'll get better. I would say time spent, right, Ryan? Did he leave?
Plus a time issue.
Yeah, plus a time issue. They could put a lot more, is what he said. They could put, wash a lot more at a time, and they were going to get cleaner, and it wasn't going to damage the, the gear as it has been in the past.
And a health issue.
Yeah, and a health issue, right. Animal control, we talked about doing a wage increase for animal control. It's been several years since we did a wage increase for that department. It just figured out to like, I think it was total was like three hundred and seventy-five dollars for like five percent. We're at seventy-five hundred right now. And that's for, Chris does it mainly during his working hours, and then we have part-time with Wanda Adams that does it evenings and weekends. And like I said, that was, I think, I believe it was only, was minimal. But yeah, you know, every little bit counts. That, what's that?
Those don't fall under public works, then?
They do during the day. Public works oversees that during the day. And then we have a part-time person that oversees it at night and on weekends.
Well, I'm saying, like, the pay.
Oh.
Is he getting paid?
This is more for the part-time person.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's going from seventy-five hundred to seventy-eight, seventy-five. Chris gets a small portion of that, which is like maybe fifteen hundred a year. Just a small portion that covers like his weekends and stuff when the other person can't cover it in nights. For the city clerk wage increase, we had discussed five percent. We haven't, you know, that's just initiation. We haven't got together as personnel committee to talk about that at all. Some of the things that Parks had asked for is seal coat, seal coat the roadway at Deerwood Campground, purchase a golf cart. That was going to be a state bid. I believe it was for twelve thousand. Oh, you're back there, Tom. And then engineering for designing new bathrooms of Angels and Gardener's Park that we wouldn't be looking at until like FY26. But maybe putting some, some of the preliminary costs together. Did you want to speak on any of your items?
Yeah, this is, I don't know if you, I know Dick's been down to Angels Park with me about a year ago, and we looked at the bathrooms down there. And I think at that time, we both decided that, yeah, that building needs to, at some point, need to be taken down and replaced. I've got right now just engineering cost in there right now to come up with plans and that sort of thing, what it's going to take to rebuild it. Basically, your layout and everything else. So then we can take it to the bidding process, figure out what it's going to cost us, and hopefully, at some point, also get a grant through gaming or whatever for the, for the both parks. Myers Lake will enlarge that. We'll make it a multi-stall bathroom, a couple urinals for the guys, and a toilet. Women will actually have more than one toilet. So it's, you know, with the amount of people that we use that park, we, we definitely need to either expand that building, which if you look at the building, and I've got pictures of it here, it needs to come down. So put a new building in, expand the bathrooms so that we have a little more room in there for the people that visit there. The other thing is, is the way that the bathrooms are sitting right now. If you're on the playground, you've got kids, you've got to go to the bathroom. My, my thought is, you're going to have to take them, take them yourself because there's no, you can't see the bathrooms from the playground or the shelter. So basically, I want to turn the building and either face the bathrooms toward the lake or toward the playground area so that the parents, if they're out there with their kids, they can at least see their kids going and making sure that they make it to where they're going. As you know, that, that park is, is famous for a thing that we don't want to always remember, but we have to. And, you know, those girls were taken, and I'd hate to have it seen again. So along with that, what I'm going to check also is looking at security. We've talked about that probably shortly after the girls came missing about putting cameras out there on the island and in that park. And I think if we go ahead and put this building up, I think that'd be a good time to incorporate them as well for that park. Gardner Park would just be basically a single stall, kind of like what Myers is right now, because we don't get near the traffic in there is what we, we do. So budget-wise, just for those of you that haven't been on the council in the years past, if you look at our budget, pretty much most of what we bring in is what we've brought in from Deerwood. This past year, from April 1st to the 15th of October, we brought in two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just in camping fees. You start adding in your wood sales, your shelter rentals, we're pretty close to over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of revenue this year. I think right now, you're looking at fiscal year. If you look at the Treasury's report, you're looking at fiscal year. I think we're right around, what, one hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and sixty-eight right now for camping fees. And come April 1st, that first, when we do the sign-ups for our seasonals, that first deposit is normally a hundred thousand dollars or more. So, I mean, basically, if you, if you look at our budget, look at what we bring in, the parks in this town technically don't cost taxpayers a dime because of Deerwood Park. My projects this year is basically Deerwood Road one. I want to seal coat that around because after the construction last year, they kind of tore it up a little bit. So I just basically seal coat it, get the ruts and stuff out of it, smooth it out a little bit. And then the other thing is, like I said, working on the bathrooms and stuff like that. The only other project I got this year probably looking at is, people have been asking about it for many, many years. I know Dottie has. We're going to look at putting some, maybe a couple pickleball courts down, either in the triangle area across from the Ball Diamonds and the sewer plant, or behind the skate park. We haven't decided yet. So I'm sure you're going to make my dad one happy day. Does he like pickleball?
Oh, he loves it.
So those are just the things that we're looking at with the park board this year. I know that unless you get down at Deerwood or something like that, I probably don't see a lot of you too much, but that's where we're at. You got any questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Not yet.
Tom, how's your, how's your staffing?
We had an employee last year that, last fall, that put in his resignation. This employee is one that, there's nothing he can't do. I mean, he can fix whatever, whether it's mechanical, electrical, whatever. I mean, he worked for Black Hawk County for thirty-some years, electrician, plumber. He can do it all. He had put in his resignation, and so I spent the winter trying to find him a replacement. We may have found one at the last minute. His police department record kind of came back clean. However, I'd found something online that I was kind of scratching my head on with him. So I was kind of torn between what we should do. And at the last minute, this employee came back and said, I want to drop my resignation. He had some terms he wanted to go with, which I understand, but he's well worth the money. He's well worth the time in that. And basically, he wanted a little bit more money, but also he didn't want to work as many hours. I mean, this guy was a workaholic. He'd work twelve hours a day if you let him. And I'm hoping that he can settle down a little bit because he wants to take some time off, go fishing if he wants to or something like that. And as much time as he's put into the parks, which basically, he took over for, for Joe when, when Joe and Marilyn stepped down. And so that's been ten-plus years or more. And I think he's worth every penny of it. And so I couldn't, I couldn't say no. I just didn't say, okay, guys, what do you think, you know? But he took a large load off my shoulders when he rescinded his resignation. Because, like I said, he's gonna be a very hard man to fill his shoes with somebody else. Well, no, he was, he had his site and everything else, where he was gonna go. And, I mean, I give that to him because I thought, oh, man, that's gonna be another fight I'm gonna have to have with him. But no, he came right out last fall and said, hey, this is the site I want. I wanna come back as seasonal, but this is the site I want. And I says, oh, okay, we'll work around it and we'll see. So, hopefully, we'll get through another summer with no problems and we don't have to worry about the F-word and...
That's good news.
Firewood. You mean firewood.
Oh, no, we have to deal with firewood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the F-word.
But we don't wanna deal with the other one. Starts with F-L.
Yeah, no, nobody wants that.
No. We're all picking up what you're laying down, Tom. Thank you. Capital Projects, you know, we all know that Lafayette Reconstruction Project is gonna be the big one for us this year and for many years to come. It's just a really large project and haven't done one of those since we did River Forest Road. That's gonna be six point nine million. Eagles Landing Phase Two roadway, that's gonna, and the infrastructure's gonna be two point six million. That's why we're going, doing this bonding. And then the other one that's been, we kinda started working on it in 2020, and that was the Water Trails Project. So, we have, Adrian and I met with the DNR last week. We were required to do a no-rise certificate for where we were gonna put it. And that's where the existing, you know, a lot of people use that existing area right now. It wasn't gonna work, we couldn't put it there because there is a rise. It causes a rise in the Cedar River. So we weren't allowed it to put, we weren't allowed to use that footprint at all. So, the DNR kinda came up with some ideas, and then Adrian and I walked around some different areas down there. And we did come up with a new solution, which is gonna be just a little bit east of where the riprap is for the bike bridge that goes across the Cedar right now. And they won't cause a rise because we're actually gonna dig down the earth. And it's only gonna be about a seven point five grade, five-inch grade. So, and then there'll be, parking will be a little bit to the west of there, almost right across the street from where the bike parking is, for people that wanna take their bikes across the bridge and go the Cedar Valley Trails. So, we're working on that right now as we speak. We did talk to the DNR again. And, you know, just kind of looking at those plans, et cetera, and then we'll get those to you. So, that's where we're at on that.
So they're putting a boat ramp there, just below the bridge?
It's just below the bridge.
Do you realize you can't navigate the river from Mount McCrick to the bridge? It's too shallow?
They do realize that. Yep. It is gonna be more recreational. If you do have a boat, there will be times in the year that you will be able to put your boat in. But it's gonna be geared more towards kayakers, tubing.
Canoes?
Canoes, yep.
I still think Case for Heights Access is the spot. But we couldn't change the rise grant.
No. And this project is all but fifteen thousand funded by the DNR. They've given us three different grants to fund this project. So, once we get all those final numbers in, and, you know, we'll discuss what we're doing and how we're moving forward with that project. Public Works, you know, he's got a lot of funds going towards that Lafayette Road construction project. One thing that he did request is the Sterling Dump Truck, which is two thousand, right, Chris? Needs a new liner. It's getting pretty thin, wearing through. It has a couple spots that is worn through. That is in the budget for seven thousand. And again, that's for us fiscal year twenty-five. Engineering fees for Lafayette Construction Project, right around four hundred and fifty thousand. And we just had the roadway repairs at about a hundred thousand. Not to skip ahead, but since it involves public works, I will jump down to stormwater. We have, we did budget forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand nine hundred, nine hundred, excuse me, for the replacement of nine storm drains. Chris has been looking into this project. We're gonna try to get three done this year, and then the rest of them done next year. That's one thing that's increased more than we could even anticipated. They used to be about twenty-five hundred dollars for replacement. Now they're fifty-one hundred dollars for replacement. Thank you, Kovan. Any questions?
So there's nine of those that need to be replaced?
Excuse me, what?
There's nine of those that need to be replaced. You said you're doing two this year?
We're doing three this year, Chris.
And we'll be utilizing reserves? Is that what you're saying here?
Yes. Yeah, currently, if you look on your, on your budget, well, it doesn't actually show on there, so I apologize for that. We will be utilizing almost nineteen thousand in reserves for that project. But we have built up in there, I think, over eighteen thousand. I mean, I'm sorry, eighty thousand. That's just over time, a lot of time.
Dan, just to clarify, when you said, do three of the nine storm drains this year, do you mean calendar year or fiscal year?
Fiscal year. I did have on there about the tile at City Hall. I think we're just gonna try to get someone in here to strip it down. Maybe they can even replace a couple of the tiles. They have some notches in it. Just wear and tear. I mean, I think they're original. The building was built in nineteen seventies, so they've lasted a long time. But if possible, we'll just try to get it stripped down and, you know, put the protective coat back over it.
And you already got the estimates on that?
Uh-huh, yeah. We first were looking at doing, you know, stripping it and polishing it and having that kind of textured floor, like, just the cement. I guess that's the new wave. That was only like thirty-five hundred dollars to re-tile this, both the vestibles and the entryway to the library and this hallway here. That was gonna be eight thousand dollars. So I think we'll just pass on that this year. We'll just try to get them stripped and resaled so to protect the tile from further degrading. We've been talking about that. This is near and dear to our heart. Website upgrade or remain with company. The website company that we, Misty and I currently did a webinar with, had a great communication feature for the public. They could sign up for emails. They could sign up for text messages. That way, they could keep in contact with City Hall. We're not depending on the courier. We're not depending on other outside sources. And hopefully, we'll always try to get more traffic to our website, because we do post a lot of information on there that is helpful to our community. The reason we even started on this, because, you know, there's nothing really wrong with our website right now, is the website company that we've been with for several years was bought out. And they came back and said, well, this is how your renewal's gonna go. It's gonna be five thousand a year for the next five years. And we said, no, that's not happening. Anyway, so it caused us to start looking at some other companies. This other company that did offer this great communication feature was gonna be about forty-three, forty-five a year. So, I guess gone are the days of eight hundred dollars. It's all we've been paying for our website. And then I got another email from our current website carrier, and they said, well, you can just renew at one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. So I just, which we can, and then there's gonna be a six percent increase instead of this five thousand dollar stuff. And then I asked them about the communication piece, because, you know, people have asked about it in the past. And I think it would be great for us to consider that. And they told me their communication piece was five thousand. So I was like, she's never gotten back to me. And I said, I'm like, well, you're way off, you know, you're way off the ballpark. Excuse me. So we are still looking into that, but worst-case scenario, it's, you know, we have the one thousand one hundred and forty, and maybe we'll plan to do something in the next couple of years. It's not broken. It's very functional. You know, we don't have to do something right now, unless we wanna do the communication piece. It's not something that we, it's, you know, have to do.
Do you get any complaints or feedback?
No, not really. We have had people ask, though, in the past, you know, if we can text them, or especially during a water main break. That's your perfect example. You know, can't you text us? Don't Facebook us. I'm not on Facebook, you know? We just get, we just hear those complaints. But you don't hear the complaints until something like that happens in your city. So, and, you know, we try to do our best with post it on Facebook right away. And then also, like, you know, we can even post it on the news if we, you know? I don't know how Water Works' handle there is besides Facebook, is what I'm saying. Then we talked about, you know, possible security options, but, you know, we're kinda at a standstill with that. Didn't really have anything special for library. They are gonna start budgeting two thousand a year to replace the computers in five years, instead of having all that money come out at once. So that is part of their budget. Sewer is, you know, everybody knows, six point nine million on, it is, we are having on the sixteenth of February, Nate with Woodruff Construction is coming in to present where we're at, where, what's left to do, and to show us pictures and bring us, you know, bring us up to, you know, the scoop as far as that goes.
Was it six point nine million earlier? I heard you say nine point eight million for the wastewater?
I'm sorry. It is nine point eight million, but we have six point nine million yet to pay on it. That's an approximate number. We are also looking, we had the, we signed an agreement with Electric Pump. That was, I think, like a month or two ago, or, gosh, seems like it's maybe only six weeks ago. We signed an agreement with them to review our lift station pumps. So in other words, let's see if we have any issues and start dealing with it now, instead of kicking it down the roadway or not even knowing we have issues. They did come back with their findings, and there was two of them that needed to be replaced right away. And again, when I say right away, that's gonna be in this next budget period at East End and Lafayette Lift Stations. And then also, and I did, I did attach that estimate, didn't I? Yeah, okay. And that was gonna be fifty-two thousand two hundred and fourteen. That is in this year's budget. There's a couple pumps down at the plant that weren't originally part of the wastewater rehabilitation project, but that will need to be replaced going down the road. Mike Nyman with People's Service had recommended that we maybe just budget once, one a year, until they're all replaced, for the ones at the wastewater treatment plant. Only thing with Yardway Center, and, you know, when we talk about security and what we can do with security, you know, we don't have a security system there, so there's no way that our crew is gonna be able to see if people that own commercial businesses are dumping there. We've always had that in the past when it was at the wastewater treatment plant. So that is something that we really need to think about in the future. And, you know, I know Tom Nichols had mentioned this last year. If we're gonna do something like this, let's do it. Maybe all at once. Or maybe get some ideas and then budget a little bit each year for it. Any questions, comments? What's that?
I don't see anything that looks crazy.
Well, we will meet. I swear the agenda will say five o'clock. I would like to meet. Just for any questions or, I don't know, depending on how you guys feel. Is there, you know, there was a few changes on the one that I initially sent you due to work comp. It's, our work comp is like way low. We have a R Mod, which is a multiplier. It's down to point seven eight. And that's fantastic. And thank all of our city departments and our city employees for that rating.
Being careful.
Because you guys are being careful out there, yes. You're being careful out there. And it's, you know, this is the lowest we've ever seen it for years as a city, to have our modification points be down around there. So besides the, you know, police department, because that's just a whole separate line item in our, in for our work comp, it's gonna be around twelve thousand, which is awesome. That being said, our property insurance, just because of, you know, just...
Went up across the country because of all the natural disasters.
Yeah, it's, insurance is based on the law of large averages. So our property insurance is gonna go up thirty-five percent. So, we've looked at other companies, and that's just the, literally just the property portion of it, the buildings that we're insuring. That's what...
I'm so bad that some of the big players are pulling out of state. They just won't insure you. So, don't move and buy new property in those states, because you're not gonna get any of the big two. The third was thinking about it. They're just not gonna write a new policy. Because they've lost too much because of floods, hurricanes, whatever.
Fires.
Really, really started making, putting a lot of restrictions on roof age and all sorts of stuff.
And, which is kinda funny, in my former days, I was a manager of an insurance agency, and it just totally disfloors me when we did have that really bad hailstorm this past summer, what these estimates were coming in at. You know, back in the nineties, you could buy a house for that, you know? These estimates are coming in at forty, forty-five thousand to replace a roof and siding. It was unbelievable. You know, so it's all around. And a lot of these insurance companies were recommending these companies to do it. So I think it's crazy. It's just really pretty much out of control, if you ask me. Well, that's about it, guys. We'll probably go to Mayor and Council reports right now. I don't have anything. I've probably talked enough for everybody.
But I'll be quick.
Okay.
My crappy joke probably still stands, so. I just wanted to thank both Sandy and Dottie. For those that aren't aware, Waterloo Community School Districts is putting together a plan of possibility of a new high school, combining east and west. It'll be over by Central with the Career Center kinda focused in that area.
It'll be over by Central with the Cure, uh, the Career Center kind of focused in that area. Um, they've been hand, they've been scheduling and holding town halls, one of which was right in our neighborhood at Pointer here just over a week ago. Uh, I was able to join along with the two ladies that sit across from me. So thank you for taking some time out of your Saturday as well. Um, good meeting, everything through. I, I don't have an official verdict on which way I'm for or against the high school, but seeking more information of that on how it, obviously, the school systems are vastly important. It falls, it used to be number one. I believe the last year it's number two in relocating to certain areas right behind your lifestyle, quality of life thing. So your parks, your trails, all those, I think, just beat it out last year. Otherwise, schools are there. So very, very important to our community, um, whether you have kids in, in it or not, because it's cycling through. If we can't replace any of the citizens that leave or pass away or anything, the, the city will die. So, um, the one thing I wanted to extend to both of you gentlemen that weren't able to join us is I have been graciously offered by the superintendent and his staff to come tour their Career Center just to know a little bit more about what it is and what they're trying to game at for our, our, our kids. Um, I'm very much interested in going. I'd like to extend the opportunity as well to anybody. It'll be obviously during the day, uh, weekdays when they're in session and things. So depending on work schedules and whatnot, but I'm even gonna try and see to set something up between us, even if it's just over like a lunch break or something and take an hour, run out. It's by Central School, so.
Flexible.
But, um, if interested, I'll loop you in on a, on a non-quorum style email. However, I can do that the best of my ability.
I'd love to tour the facility. I hear great things about it.
Yeah, I, I'm not, and, and shame on me for not being enough interested in it beforehand or anything, but it's definitely got my attention now. Um, I'd like to take them up on their offer and I wanted to extend the same to everyone here.
Thank you, Justin.
And that was longer than I thought. I'm sorry.
It's okay with me. Anyone else for council? Ms. Parker?
Councilwoman Clements, um, you're, used to be on Water. Am I right in understanding with ordinance six ninety-eight that we're going from thirty-seven fifty for the wastewater treatment plant fee to eighty-five eighty?
Look at my paper.
I was doing the math.
Yeah, I think that's right. Cause twenty-eight sixty, yep.
Correct. It will go from quarterly thirty-seven fifty to eighty-five eighty.
Thank you. I apologize for saying it was going to increase by ninety dollars for quarterly bill. It will be an increase of forty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Correct.
I apologize.
Thank you.
And I want to remind people.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I just want to remind people that if I remember correctly, um, this was the less expensive of the three options that we were given several years ago, so.
And the city decided to start saving in a way.
Correct.
Gradually moving it up rather than all at once. I know communities around us, it was, again, don't quote me the exact amounts, but I want to say like fifty dollars a month. So they were hitting a hundred and fifty for the quarter all at once. Um, that was rough.
And Port, the Port city, they're dealing with post-COVID costs right now. They're really getting slammed.
So as much as nobody likes this, you know, myself included, I'm not sure I'm speaking for all of it. To the previous council, the previous administration, anything, it, it, it just had to be dealt with unfortunately. It's never fun, but hopefully this is, you know, as best as it, we can make it. I guess to point out as well, um, other programs coming out. The Water Works is also trying to figure out and get creative with billing for those that may not have the expanded funds to deal with such an increase. Um, hardship and grievance committee, I guess I will comment. So thank you for the reminder, um, at the recommendation of the membership. Um, and in fact, I would like to give Councilwoman Clements the credit of really just kind of, hey, what do you think about not only going off? So hardship and grievance, you can go in and if you qualify at a certain income underneath, you're able to get some credit to help offset some accounts. It's not wiping it out, but at least it's some dollars. There's a certain level that from federally, if I'm understanding correct, goes up as a recommended each year for kind of the inflation and adjustments. That's just the recommendation. We can set it to whatever we want. And this time, um, the committee did agree to pass that even higher so that your income level, even if it's higher, as long as you're under that, will help to try to offset some of these. So again, it's not a hundred percent, but it's a few dollars. So as much as the, the city is, is well aware that the price is going up, we are certainly trying to be as creative as possible to especially help those more in the sensitive areas of income that this will hit the hardest, so.
Cause there's surely many, many people in our town who would qualify to have thirty-nine dollars taken off their bill every quarter, which almost pays for the increase for the wastewater treatment plant fee of forty-eight dollars. So when we only have eight people apply twice a year, we know there's more limited income households.
We'll be doing advertising at the recommendation of the group as well. So whether it's, uh, when the applications come out again, so it's, uh, once every six months. So the next round won't be until July. But really trying in the Evansdale Newsletter, I'm hearing good things about it being resurrected.
Yes.
We will advertise it in there. We just want to get the word out to again, try to help and at least notify that the, there are options available, so.
Can anyone tell me what those, uh, criteria is for being able, what do they do? Take social security, retirement, whatever?
Yeah, if they get food stamps, social security, they may even get section eight and sometimes still qualify. So it's any income that you have coming in has to be, has to be verified.
So it includes investments, blah, blah, blah?
Absolutely. Yeah. I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All in favor? Or opposed?
It's been a long day.